Okay. So, good evening. I'd like to call the committee of the whole budget meeting of July 31st, 2019 to order. I would like to begin by reading a safety notice. "In the event of an emergency, please evacuate council chambers to the nearest exit door through the chamber doors and obey all instructions given by the clerk." And tonight, it's Ms. Rebecca Mackay. Rebecca, can you raise your hand so people know you are the girl in charge in the event of an emergency? If assistance is required, please see the clerk. Tonight, if anything does happen, we need to space special attention to your worship. We need not trample her in the event of any controversy. Once you've evacuated the building, please gather in the front parking lot outside of the town hall. Also, the Town of Lincoln Committee and Council meetings are posted on our YouTube channel. I would like to thank the public for attending the meeting this evening, and I just wanted to remind everyone of our rules of engagement: to be respectful while others are speaking and to please refrain from clapping. Delegations will have five minutes to speak and are asked to stay focused on the agenda item. Please remember to silence all cellular devices. Roll call of council. Councillor Adam Russell and Councillor Diane Ranjima send their regrets this evening. Staff are in attendance. Are there any declarations of interest this evening? I see none. There are no statutory public meetings on the agenda. We have no delegations this evening. We are now considering consent item 6.1 FN-15-19. That was not silent. Disaster mitigation and adaptation fund, DMAF application. Would any member like to remove this item from the consent agenda to discuss? Okay. There being no one, we will require a mover for the motion to pass consent, item being 6.1 FN-15-19 disaster mitigation and adaptation fund, DMAF application. Councillor Brene, all in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried. We're now moving on to our regular agenda. So, we're now considering item 7.1, 2020 Budget 101. I'd like to announce our CEO, Michael Kirkopolis, and Acting Director of Finance and Administration, Terry Trauwalha, will be providing a presentation for committee this evening. Take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through YouTube Council, Terry and I will be taking you through the 2020, what we've titled Budget 101. Some of this information definitely isn't new, is a little bit of a repeat, but I think, you know, as we head into each session and each round of budgets, important to bring it forward and to highlight it for council. So, the agenda this evening, we are going to start the presentation focusing on budget planning. We'll then move to council priorities, followed by community growth, a conversation around affordability, some important information around just some of the policy changes, master plans, and economic trends that we're currently seeing. And then, we will end it with some information regarding budget 2020. And although we are only in July, and it seems like 2020 is not nearly close, the preparations and the work that we need to do starts very early and actually continues year-round. So, you've seen this slide before. This really talks about community impact. And you'll see that we've highlighted the business planning section, which really is about budget planning and what we're here to talk to you about today. You can see that the other elements of this continuum focus on the roles of smart growth and generally those overarching provincial principles that guide and lead our decision-making. We've then got local, regional, and provincial policy, so things like our official plan, the importance of development charges, asset management, things that are both legislated and mandated, but that are important, again, in that conversation with council and with the community when we talk about budget. Followed by that, we have council priorities, a process that we undertake every term with council and one that we are nearing completion with this term and this term of council, followed by budget planning, as I said, currently where we're at, and then program and service delivery. And again, we will get in a little bit of this later in the presentation, talking about the various services and service delivery. So, the next section, I'm going to turn it over to Terry, who's going to take you through some of the budget planning principles and criteria.
So, why do we budget? So, we do it for fiscal accountability. We do it to allocate the financial resources to where we want them. We do it for financial management, some internal control, and also to manage the information. But ultimately, it's so that we can improve the desired results and also for the benefit of all of the citizens and the businesses in the community. So, budget planning is actually a year-round process. There's a lot of inputs to it. We go through the planning and the development stage, but after it's been approved, we still have to implement it, and then we do the monitoring through the year so that next year, we can then again start at the planning stage. But we always seek ongoing feedback for the entire budget planning, both from the public and from council. Some of the general budget principles that we have is to encourage sustained growth through responsible investments. Since the Town of Lincoln is a vibrant, thriving, and diverse part of the Niagara region, it's -- we're constantly evolving the financial health, discipline, and investment capacity in order to continue delivering public services. The investments we make today are going to form a solid foundation for our future prosperity. And the approach we undertake also continues to deliver value for the taxes and to instill business confidence. So, how do we begin? So, it's a shared responsibility between council, the CAO, finance, and also the individual departments and their respective teams. And we all play a very important role in the financial management. So, council is responsible for the oversight. It all begins with your approval. You have the following responsibilities: you establish the major goals and performance objectives that we want to meet; you approve the guidelines and the policy framework and make sure that they're being followed. We also establish the annual budget for which services and the levels of services you want to be provided and how we're going to finance them. Then, we monitor the progress toward the achievement, and you also make sure that we undertake an independent audit annually to make sure that financial management's being taken care of. The CAO, he's responsible for the day-to-day operation and the administration of the municipal government. He develops the policies, the policy guidelines for your review and approval. He prepares and submits the annual operating capital budget, ensures the adopted budget is properly administered. He also supervises all of the contracts and employee obligations, authorize and direct the purchase of the supplies. He makes sure that you guys stay -- that council stays fully informed about the financial health of the municipality and make sure that we're doing the financial reports to The treasurer, I am responsible for handling the financial affairs of the town on behalf of and in the manner directed by council. That means providing and translating the financial information, guiding the departments through the budget and the fiscal reporting cycle, maintaining the accurate records and accounts of the financial affairs. Also, in finance, we collect the money payable, whether it's property taxes, water, wastewater, all of those. We also pay the debts, so whether it's payroll or our regular accounts payable. And we also ensure the investments are made in accordance with the proper policies. The individual departments, though, they play the most critical role in the financial management. They actually plan out what activities they're going to undertake in order to meet the goals and objectives of council. They're responsible for the day-to-day administration, and they're responsible for the preparation of the budget requests, making sure that they emphasize the objectives and service levels. They establish what the level of accomplishment's going to be, and they're responsible for providing those levels of service within the budgets that are set. So, key considerations when we're thinking of strategic budgeting is always the council priorities need to be top of the mind. It's important that we align with the collective vision and the council priorities. We want to make sure that we're focusing on community growth, and affordability is always very important for our citizens. And then, public policy changes and the economic trends, just incorporating all of those large and small concepts into our planning. So, when we're actually doing strategic budgeting, we need to make sure that we're looking at controlling the expenditures to ensure affordability, fostering a culture of continuous improvement, making sure that they're outcome-based and evidence-based decision-making, the effective means for achieving the resource allocation that reflects the expenditure priorities, making sure that the community is ready. We also have to take into consideration the mandated versus legislated services. There's risk and health and safety criteria, customer service. There's a lot of these different things that we have to make sure we're keeping in mind as we're doing these, the budget preparations. And then, I'm going to throw it back to me.
Thanks, Terry. So, I think, you know, when you look at the last half a dozen or so slides that Terry went through, I think it points to a process that is very iterative, that involves council, involves the entire organization, but one that's critical for our community, both from a trust and confidence perspective, but also to ensure that the resources that we are setting aside and that council is approving are aligned to what residents want and what residents think are important. So, now, moving through to council priorities and that alignment that Terry referenced. We are currently in that process of our council priorities and what they mean. You'll see here that we've highlighted the four priorities that have been adopted in principle: a welcoming community, a connected community, a vibrant community, and a resilient community. The work that is happening now is really the alignment under each of those, of the various works that are undertaken, the various projects that are currently in place, and some of the new things that we have heard from council over the last number of months. Impact to the budget, what we need to do to achieve this. So, it's often a balance, and we've had these conversations with council over the last number of years, of investing in those mandatory items that we need to look at, that are required, that are legally binding, that are legislated and mandated from senior levels of government or from the appropriate statutes and laws, versus and/or in addition to those special projects, which are sometimes the discretionary items. At the end of the day, we try to look at equal investments needed to achieve all those goals that council has set out. And investing, one of the principles that you'll hear us talk about is investing in people to get the work done. At the end of the day, we can continue to add more projects, but we will reach that point where that threshold and that tipping point is maximized and where we need to look at investing in the appropriate resources to get the work done, both in a timely manner and an appropriate manner. So, house staff will incorporate all of this into the 2020 budget planning, really does start tonight. We have met with each member of council on the capital side to discuss what our current 2020 capital plan looks like, but also to hear from you very early in the process what maybe is missing, what maybe should be added, looking at where some of the investments and the priorities are. In each of those meetings, we're really focused on the respective wards, but of course, looking at those projects that actually transcend individual wards and then have a significant impact to the broader community. So, community growth, building a strong, balanced, and prosperous Lincoln. Again, a little bit of Lincoln's story, and I think it's important always to provide a little bit of this context when we look at demographics, trends that are really based on census and growth projections. As you can see there, our population is 24,000, and that will increase by anywhere from 30% to 40% in the next 10 years when we look at the various developments that have been approved and coming onboard. We have a land area that is fairly significant when we look at our comparators across Niagara region, definitely in the top three or four within the Niagara region. We've seen a population growth of almost 6%. Our female-to-male ratio is approximately 50/50 as well, with an average age of 42.9. And then, a little bit around births in terms of the age quadrants and the age categories that those fall into, the number of households within our community, which is always an important statistic when we talk about taxes. We've heard, and you've heard us present on numerous occasions, that we are one of the faster-growing municipalities, so that doesn't come as a surprise. And as I said, our population's actually expected to grow by almost 50%. An important statistic, and I think one that we take a lot of pride in and that council should as well, is that job growth statistic in terms of 8%. So, that really is part of the focus that you've had on economic development, but also the focus on making sure that the policies from a planning perspective and otherwise from a customer service perspective, make sure that we are open for business and make sure that we are processing things in a timely manner. So, last year, we took a lot of pride in presenting this statistic, and this really shows, and we're seeing a trend continue for this year and probably the next few years, where we saw over $120 million in construction value, something that pretty much doubled what we had seen in any of the previous years, even our most busy years in 2013 and 14, when we saw some large developments come onboard in the community. We also saw construction value in terms of the number of permits issued for residential units more than double as well. So, a testament really, again, to the business climate within the town, but also, I think, points out the amount of work that is being done by senior staff to ensure that things are moving through the system and that things are being approved in an appropriate and timely manner. So, construction value and service demands, again, this is one of those graphics we've shared with council in the past, but really lays out the different types of new construction and the various new infrastructure that goes along with those two and that goes along with construction, and then what that means from the perspective of bringing more residents, more tourists, and more employees in our local businesses to town. But the last, most right slide or right column that talks about service demand is the one that, from a staff perspective, from a management perspective, we look at and we try to address and mitigate and find efficiencies to ensure that we're able to deliver services within an appropriate level of affordability. So, you know, what do I mean by that? Everything from snow removal to some of the maintenance work we need to do, programming, of course, fire and emergency services, just the processing of various tax bills and municipal documentation, as well as I highlighted previously, building and planning permits and just business expansion and growth support. So, at the end of the day, more construction is good, but it does mean more infrastructure, more people, which does require a certain level of service maintenance. So, a little bit about community growth. What is it and why do we focus on it? As you can see here, you know, we talk about new infrastructure coming along, as I highlighted on the previous slide, and what that means in terms of operating costs to keep those assets in good working order. We don't just look at our assets and look at new infrastructure from the perspective of we need it because new people are here. It really does come from the perspective of liability and looking at our risk, and you've heard more conversations and more information being shared recently when we look at risk and liability and not maintaining that certain level of service. So, these are all elements and criteria that we look at when we look at the various recommendations around service levels to council. As I highlighted, more people puts added pressure both on existing and new infrastructure beyond the minimum required amounts. Our residents have very differing demands about what they want from their tax dollars. So, how often should snow be cleared? We had two very successful park engagement sessions in terms of the amenities people want. And so, as municipalities, we have very few ways in which we can look at funding those enhancements, funding those programs, other than the tax bill. Of course, there's user fees, there's looking to senior levels of government, but I'll share a lot of information on those too as we move forward. So, why do we invest now? I mean, oftentimes, you're faced with making decisions about investing now, and we've talked to you about that development lag. When are those developments going to come onboard? When are those new residents is going to start paying taxes? And what does that look like from a long-term funding and sustainability perspective? So, we do need to prepare for that. Again, I don't think it comes as a surprise to this council at all, the importance of preparing for the future. We have one of the most economically diverse communities here in Niagara in terms of jobs and diversification, and all of that, at the end of the day, does lead to connect and works its way towards our goals of becoming a vibrant and prosperous community. So, in terms of affordability, we spend a lot of time at budget time and other times of the year talking about affordability, value for tax dollar, and citizen expectations. So, I think it's important to highlight, there aren't a lot of people here today, but those that may watch this, those that may read anything that gets reported on it. Affordability always remains something that's top of mind for staff as we bring forward recommendations to council. It's part of all budget planning that we do. We're always cognizant of the programs we deliver. Can we deliver them differently? Can we deliver them more efficiently? Also, we talk about affordability when we talk about housing affordability. This is often discussed in the community. I think there's a number of public meetings that I've been to, when people bring up the topic of taxes, they bring up the topic of affordability in relation to property taxes and budget. And so, housing affordability relates very much to the housing market, the availability of diverse housing stock, and market prices. Some things that are definitely beyond our control, and I'm going to show you two charts that looks at Lincoln's competitiveness, one that incorporates affordability and one that does not incorporate affordability. And so, two of those statistics in terms of affordable communities and affordability are listed below, and like I said, I'm going to show you the more in-depth chart. But we are the fourth lowest in relation to property assessment. So, this removes how much people make. I often hear, well, of course, we're ranked at the bottom, which is a good thing in this particular case, as the second lowest when we look at property taxes relative to household income and whether we look at property taxes and water rates as a percentage of household income. But I think the most, or the more telling statistic, is that we're still fourth lowest when we look at and we remove that element of affordability and median household income, which sometimes can skew those results. So, here's that first, that first chart that I shared with you in terms of Lincoln being the second lowest when we look at property taxes as a percentage of household income, 3.6%, with only West Lincoln ahead of us at 3.5%. So, this does look, as I said, at the household median income of residents in our community and property taxes as a percentage of that particular income. So, a very good statistic here in terms of being second lowest. As I said, this one is the one that I think is more telling and the one that I want to spend more time on. As you see here, we're the fourth lowest, and so, there were two councillors that were in my office when we were going through capital budget. Councillors McPherson and Mikulak, who said, "Well, Mr. CAO, great slide there where we're the second lowest, but that may be very obvious because we have," I mean, maybe some would perceive us to have a more affluent community, one where median incomes are higher. Some of that is proven through Statistics Canada, some of that is anecdotal, but nonetheless, what if we were to remove household income? What would that look like? So, within that meeting that lasted a number of hours, probably my longest of the four meetings that we had, I said, "Okay, let me get online and look up the region's calculator, property tax calculator, which allows you to put in any value of your home, anything from $100,000 to $400,000 to $700,000, whatever you wanted to put in." And then, it actually shows you, with that number staying the same for each municipality, where your particular municipality ranks throughout the 12. So, as you can see here, we're once again on the bottom part of the chart, in the lowest quadrant here, if you look at where we rank in terms of being the fourth lowest. A great statistic, this is probably one of the few times I like being at the bottom of the chart versus the top of the chart, but as you can see, Lincoln is 23% below the average. So, sometimes a hard story to tell, sometimes our residents are often coming to us saying property taxes are too high, and I think that's something that every municipality probably hears and every member of senior staff in any one of those municipalities, and dare I say, every council member in each of those municipalities, probably has a hard time telling that story, and I think it is because notwithstanding where we rank here within the Niagara context, things are increasing in cost. It's sometimes difficult to find an ability to pay for things that are constantly going up, whether that amount is 2%, 1%, 3%. We have a lot of residents in our communities, whether you're affluent or not, that are on fixed incomes, that are seniors, and that often do find it difficult to pay. But, you know, I'm spending a lot of time talking about this slide because I think it is an important one that speaks to that particular case, and I do think it's important for council to hear. And I know council is very aware of the efforts taken to make sure that affordability is a lens and one of the key lenses that we look at from a budget perspective. So, property assessment, tax base, and property taxes. You know, we often hear residents compare municipality to municipality. Like many of us, I've worked in other municipalities, and we often hear the comparison, doesn't matter how big or small, to the large center of the universe known as Toronto. And everybody says, "Well, my property taxes are lower in Toronto." And I think there's a number of factors that property taxes are based on. One is property assessment, and that's definitely determined by impact. And then, there's parts of that reassessment exercise or reassessment calculation that includes the various phased elements so that you don't receive that startling number all at once. Of course, tax levy, which is the cost of regional, local, and education services in single-tier municipalities, that's combined, the first two. And then, the number of property owners to distribute the cost of services. Without getting into too much detail, the example below, if you consider, you know, Toronto and Lincoln from example purposes only. If the cost of doing business in Toronto was $5 million, that $5 million is distributed across a million different property owners. Therefore, their portion is significantly smaller. In Lincoln, that $5 million is distributed around a much smaller amount of property owners, and so therefore, our portion is significantly higher. The larger the municipality, the more homes in that municipality, the more they're able to share that portion of the pie. So, it's not an easy message to communicate, definitely, but municipal comparisons are not just based on property taxes alone. And so, I think we'll always lose that debate if we're trying to compare ourselves to, you know, something larger like a Toronto or those residents that are coming maybe from other parts of the GTA who say, "You know, my property taxes were lower in this particular location." I think people choose destinations, they choose locations for some of those other amenities that can be provided, and I think Niagara affords that ability, from the type of house you can buy to the amount of house you can buy to the green space and other amenities. So, again, probably spending a little bit more time on this than we typically have in the past, but I think it's an important message. So, here is a video that I'm going to share with council. It is the video that shows the relationship between property assessment and property taxes. It is something Niagara region has done and has encouraged all of us to use.
Okay. I want to explain to you how your property taxes are calculated based on how much your home is worth. Imagine there's a town that only has three homes, and they're each worth a different amount. The total cost to provide all of their town's services is $1,000. This is collected through property taxes. Each homeowner pays property taxes based on how much their home is worth. So, the value of all the homes are added up and divided by the town's cost, which gives us the tax rate. This tax rate is applied to all the houses to get enough money to pay for all of the services. So, each homeowner pays according to how much their house is worth. Every four years, the houses are reassessed. Let's say all three properties have gone up equally in value. If we go back to our calculation, the total cost of services hasn't changed, but the total property value has increased. When this happens, there'll be a decrease in the tax rate. Now, when we apply that new rate on all the homes, everyone still pays the same. Let's recap. Property taxes are based on what a home is worth. Property taxes are based on what a home is worth. If reassessments all increase equally, then everyone pays the same taxes as before. Now, let's say another four years has gone by and these homes are reassessed. During this time, the house on the right became more valuable in the market than the other two. Okay, so, time for a little more math. The total value of all the homes have increased, which means the town has to calculate a new tax rate. With this new tax rate, the first two homes will actually pay less than the home on the right that was reassessed at a higher value. Since the cost of services hasn't changed, the town doesn't need to collect more property taxes. However, since property taxes are based on a home's value, those taxes could potentially go up or down based on the rest of the homes. So, what happens when the cost to provide services goes up? Well, it means more property taxes need to be collected from every home and a new tax rate is calculated. To get the new rate, we take that amount that the town now needs and divide it by all the property values. The new rate is applied to all the homes and now everyone has to pay the new tax amount to continue to fund all of the services. So, let's review. One, property taxes are based on the value of a home. When homes are reassessed equally, each homeowner will pay the same amount proportionately as before. Two, when homes are reassessed at different values, each homeowner will pay a different amount proportionally based on how much their home increased in value. Three, when the town's cost to provide services increases, property tax increase, then everyone pays their share proportionally across the board. And that explains the relationship between property value and property taxes.
So, moving on to household impact and probably picking up a little bit on the video in the previous slides. I did want to share with council where we were last year in 2019 at the blended rate, the overall rate. And it's important, I think, that we share both rates. But at the end of the day, the blended rate is the rate that people see at the bottom of their tax bill. Not everybody knows whether we're 0.27%, 0.4%, 0.3% of the tax bill. At the end of the day, if the region goes up, it is still the town of Lincoln that is the bearer of that tax bill to its residents. If education goes down or goes up, it is still the town of Lincoln that has the logo on that tax bill that each resident receives. And yes, it is itemized within the bill. But that blended rate last year was 3.7%. And then, you can see what that meant in terms of property tax increases based on their respective assessed values. So, this is one of the slides that we were communicating to residents in terms of what they received on a per-year basis with that increase in the property taxes from 2018 to 2019. I think oftentimes, we like to put it in context of what people do every day, what people purchase every day. So, the increase was less than the equivalent of one large coffee per week that a citizen receives per $100,000 assessed value. So, these are some of the 92 different services that we provide to residents of our community. Once again, this is the looney, the dollar that we often share with you and how the respective agencies, boards, commissions, departments, divisions make up your prospective tax dollar. So, continued investment in affordability. Just a few more comments on this before I turn it over to Terry on the next few slides. You heard us talk about the importance of balance in terms of looking at investment, in terms of looking at affordability, as well as the requirement and necessity, I think, when we're talking to residents and taxpayers to make sure that we have informed and data-driven decision-making. I think this is a key point. Residents want to know the data we're using to make our decisions, why we make the decisions we do and how those decisions support the delivery of service. The cost of not investing, I think, is also something that's important that we talk about. So, we have old infrastructure, as many municipalities do. It is essential that we can invest in that infrastructure. And it does have an impact to well-being. It has an impact to the movements of goods and services. Businesses, you know, if we use that business example, and a lot of people, you know, often cite those business examples to us. Businesses are successful if they invest in their inventory, if they invest in their materials, if they invest in the infrastructure to continue to deliver services. And I would hazard to guess one of the most important ones is they invest in their people. All important elements of successful businesses, it doesn't matter whether you're talking private sector, public sector, the fishbowl that we often work in, in the public sector makes a lot of these conversations, something that is communicated and shared and viewed and interpreted in a multitude of different ways. But every successful business needs to look at amongst these four, but considerably other necessary investments. So, policy changes, master plans and economic trends. Here, we're going to spend a little bit of time talking about some of the policy changes that we're seeing, some of the master plan impacts, and again, some local and more global economic trends. So, I think this is, I'm turning it over to Terry.
So, financial sustainability, it's often heard. And what does it actually mean, though? It's making sure that we're balancing today's services with tomorrow's needs. We want to make sure that there's program sustainability through the quality services and sound financial management. We want to have rate stability so that there's not huge fluxes in what people see. There needs to make sure there's intergenerational equity, having good financial health and the financial condition and using, or financial sustainability is a good business tool. So, why does financial sustainability matter? We have limited resources and it needs to be based or allocated based on strategic priorities. There's always changes in funding formulas. We have growth and compression. There's pressures on the tax base. Decision-making usually seems to be more short-term and that's at the expense of the future generations. And there's a growing infrastructure deficit in the entire province and we're faced with more and more requirements. So, there's a roadmap to long-term financial sustainability, which will allow us to have better information to support the decision-making, improve our value for money, secure the adequate and fair revenue. It helps to improve focus on financial health and to plan and develop better integration with provincial and federal policies and as well as fiscal direction. So, the next step for Town of Lincoln is to develop more parts of this plan. So, in a provincial context, it's important to consider that infrastructure gap that I mentioned. A lot of the funding changes results in municipalities receiving less. And at the same time, there's a continued increase in doing business, but less funding sources to manage it. So, the following chart is going to demonstrate the trend. This one is the revenue that's needed to fund the operating expenses and the infrastructure gap. As you can see, it's going up, how much is needed. So, they projected in 2015 that municipalities are going to need an annual 8% increase to fund operating and close the gap for infrastructure costs over the next 10 years. Council's continuously been investing in the special levy as one of the strategies to overcome the ongoing challenge that municipalities face. And for your reference, as I mentioned, our municipal funding seems to be going down. In 2017, we had about $1.2 million in funding. And then, since then, it's been consistently going down. We don't have our 2020 allocation yet, but it has been communicated that they expect it to go down again. In 20, they were going to reduce it even more in 2019, but it was getting kind of late. So, they said, "Oh, we'll just reduce it a little bit." So, once we get more information on the funding, we'll bring it back to council as well. So, this is the provincial funding in relation to the projected households. So, while our funding has been going down, the number of households has been going up, which is putting more demand on our services. So, regionally and locally, the, we have a lot more legal advice. So, it's a very complex municipal environment nowadays. So, we want to make sure that we're managing the organization risk. Climate change is a really big one, both for the winter maintenance and for shoreline protection. We want to make sure that we get up to the appropriate levels of service and do preventative maintenance. Rather than being reactive, we want to be proactive. There's also the service expectations. Road condition is the most visible to all residents, but it's also the most expensive to fix. There's the implementation of upcoming master plans, the transportation master plan, parks master plan, corporate systems review. There's also the provincial review that's coming up that may impact service delivery. There's facility expansion due to the growth, for example, the fire station. And then, with the transportation master plan and the parks and rec, PRC master plan, the cost to the implementation, we need to set the stage. And then, the plans are designed to be flexible to accommodate changing community needs. So, also looking overall at the economy. In 2019, the Canada CPI was 2% and for energy, it was 0.7%. As well, the new non-residential building construction, which is the one that we kind of look at to gauge our costs, was 4.8% overall, but in the Toronto area, it was 5.2%.
Thanks, Terry. So, just to quickly go back to these particular two slides. We talked a little bit about appropriate levels of service and preventative maintenance. And I think one of the illustrative examples that I want to share with council as we head into this next budget and that you'll hear more about is those minimum maintenance standards that Dave Graham and Public Works oftentimes talked to you about. Let's look at this particular year as we move into 2020, that there will be a requirement that we look at sidewalk clearing. And we now need to look at, what is the budget impact of doing that? Do we do that in-house? Do we outsource that? And so, I can definitely answer any questions to that maybe after the presentation. But I think I wanted to highlight that one. Some of these things are definitely beyond our context, are beyond our control. They're things that provincially were being asked to do. And so, some of the other slides, you saw that provincial funding going down, the number of households and service demands going up. But there's also things that are mandated and legislated that we need to deliver. And if I think about sidewalk clearing, that will be a costly undertaking for many municipalities across the GTA and across the province for those that don't do it. So, these are all things that we're cognizant of, all things that we look at from a council perspective and analysis that we'll be bringing to you. And just quickly here, you've probably read in the paper, there's been a number of conversations, whether it be at the region, other municipalities, which of these indices is often best to use? Some people like to talk about inflation. Others like to talk about the consumer price index, non-residential building construction. Municipalities have their own index that is often higher because municipalities sometimes are seen as agencies within that mush sector that aren't necessarily as competitive because we're not in the private sector. And so, oftentimes bids come in higher than what you would be seeing in a typical building construction environment. And so, we're looking at these, as you can see, the range goes anywhere from almost 1% for energy to 5% and beyond when we look at various non-residential construction prices. So, as we are a growing municipality, it's important to highlight that as we go out for whether it be roads projects, and we do try to get out early. We are one of the municipalities that approves its budget before December so that we can be ready to go early in the latter parts of the winter months in terms of our procurement work so that we can get better prices. But these are all things, again, that we do our best to estimate, do our best to prepare for. But sometimes, we see increases, again, that fluctuate anywhere between 1, 2, you know, I'd say close to double-digit increases depending on the type of service you're procuring. So, a little bit as we head into budget 2020. In terms of building the budget, we're going to talk a little bit about annual budgets. We're going to talk to you about council priorities, our operations and capital budgets, services, infrastructure and asset management. Like I said, some of this has begun already in terms of those conversations with council and will occur. One of the charts you saw at the beginning was how do we course correct? How do we get better each year? We heard last year the importance of that continued dialogue with council, you wanting to be more informed, you wanting to have more of those conversations as we set budgets. So, we've made some of that course correction this year in this budget. And again, just looking at service levels, increased cost to deliver services, sustainability and affordability. So, consolidated budget statements are provided to council, again, that allow for strategic decision-making. This is how we build the budget. The budget, from a staff perspective, as you'd want and as you'd expect, is built through line-by-line estimates of money coming into the town in terms of what will be purchased over the specified time. I can tell you when you've sent us away to go back and start looking at budgets and looking at lines in the past. There have been thousands of lines that I have reviewed with Terry, with Angela prior to Terry in terms of looking at each one of those and where the increases are. And a balanced budget is required under the municipal act, section 2902, which effectively really says money coming in equals money going out or revenues equals expenditure. So, some fairly simple principles, but nonetheless, a very detailed and lengthy exercise that we go through for council so that you can make some of those strategic decisions. Again, a little bit of detail around what our operating budget includes, some terms and some phrases that you often hear us highlight, programs and services, salaries and wages, one-time, base adjustments, growth, operating impacts from capital projects. This is an important one. I think sometimes municipalities generally approve capital projects, but don't necessarily look at what are the operating impacts of bringing on new facilities or bringing on, you know, additional roads or any of the other capital works we do. So, it is important that we look at those operating impacts so that you're not hearing from us once these capital projects happen, "Well, by the way, we need X to operate them." Or seeing increases in various budget line items and you're wondering where they're coming from. So, funding sources, you've seen this as well. Grants are often sources for the town in terms of where we get some of our monies. Of course, fines, penalties and interest, the tax levy being one of the major ones. We have finance revenue. So, a little bit about our investments here, income from our trust funds, various property sales, user fees and service charges, long-term borrowing is another way we fund items. Some people call it debt, but it is long-term borrowing or debt. Those can be used interchangeably. It's not a revenue source, but it is a method and a principle and a philosophy when you look at large capital projects like facilities where residents should pay or can pay for that facility over the life cycle of that facility instead of all at once. And so, some basic principles of long-term borrowing. Of course, growth and assessment, this is one of those positives in terms of increase to property taxes when new homes or businesses are brought on stream. And reserve, our reserves are important. You're seeing us invest, as Terry highlighted, in our reserves, whether it be that infrastructure levy. It is important to put money in the bank. Sometimes it's hard, again, to communicate the message that it's important to tax people to put money in that bank. But it is important when we look at long-term sustainability that we are looking at our reserves, that we're making sure they're healthy, that we're putting monies aside for future projects and for future rehabilitation. So, capital budgets, as you know very well, because we often spend a lot of time talking about capital, pay for our large infrastructure projects to build both new facilities and to rehabilitate existing town-owned assets. The impact to the levy, capital projects, as I highlighted before, are funded through a variety of methods, including both planned savings, reserves, debt, some of that long-term borrowing, as well as the levy and development charges, depending on the type of... and development charges, depending on the type of project, where it's located. The monies we receive from development in the community is often set aside to pay for these projects. Water and wastewater rates. We often, once we're through with our operating and capital budgets, bring to council budget as it relates to water and wastewater rates. And this budget is used to pay for our central water and wastewater services. And so things like the delivery of clean drinking water, the wastewater collection and removal, and the infrastructure and maintenance of our water and wastewater system. On average, 50% of each utility bill is for Niagara region's water and wastewater costs. And this is a shared responsibility in terms of treatment and distribution between the region and the town. So our 10-year capital and project plan, and you'll see we've added project there because most of the things we have in our 10-year capital plan are capital projects. But some of them are projects that straddle in some ways both capital and operating. And so I think it's probably a better descriptor to have project in there. So it is a tool. It provides guidance during our annual budget presentation process. It is an estimate in terms of the year in which projects come forward. The latter you go in the 10-year capital plan, there is more flexibility. The philosophy that we try to have is that earlier in that 10-year capital outlook, that those should be a little bit more fixed and a little bit more firm, both in terms of year but also in terms of estimated cost to deliver those projects. It is reviewed annually and updated. It's often a starting point that we use with council and amongst ourselves in terms of budget planning. It does try to reflect any potential new sources or decreases to those sources of funding. And it is something, you know, I know as council knows, that is fluid in the sense of community needs and priorities sometimes do change. And so it is a tool that allows us to be able to do that. So again, just an example of the levy requirements from last year in terms of what our capital levy and operating levy looks like. I think it's important to highlight that we levied 1.29 million for capital, but that does not mean that's what we spent on capital. That is just a portion that was part of the levy. The rest of it was through DC's reserves and we actually spent well over $10 million in terms of our capital works in 2018. As you can see there, it's distributed across the tax base, the residential, commercial and industrial elements of our tax base. So service delivery, in the past, you've heard us, I think, touch around the edges of service delivery. You've heard us use some of these categories that are categories that various agencies, whether it be KPMG, Deloitte, et cetera, do when they look at service delivery reviews. And they're typically found in one of these four groupings. Mandated, legislated, often kind of put together if you were going to group them. And then traditional is typically on its own and discretionary. Just to give you a little bit of an example of the differences, things that are mandated are things that are required to do under various acts. Things we do around clean water in the Clean Water Act are mandated. We have some legislated responsibilities, things around collective bargaining agreements that have been negotiated and that are also governed under various acts. Traditional, things that fall in that traditional category are things that residents expect. For example, it is not mandated or legislated that we have parks anywhere in the community. But if you talk to most residents, they expect parks in their community. They're often those services that are traditional, that we have been providing for decades, if not longer, as long as municipalities have existed, and they fall in that traditional category. And then there's, you know, what we call those discretionary services. There are those nice-to-have-type things, important things, things that sometimes you're starting to see become traditional things, but that still are discretionary. So IT services, discretionary in some ways, but people want to do things online. Economic development, discretionary, not necessarily something traditional per se, but along that kind of cusp of, in order to be a successful community, it's important, communications. Another element that falls in that discretionary category, but residents want to know what's going on. They want to be engaged in various programs, and so, again, important. So the service delivery impacts are primarily limited to those last two categories. And I think the reason I share some of those, I'll get into the next two slides, is really around where are some of those uncontrollable costs? We talked a lot about affordability earlier in the presentation. And where are the discretionary costs? So if we broke down uncontrollable, it's really those mandated and legislated costs. These are things that we're obligated to do. If we have staff, especially those that fall under the collective agreement, we have to pay them. We have to give them the wages that have been negotiated and that fall under the Employment Standards Act and the associated benefits that come with them. There's the wage grid progressions that also fall under those negotiated settlements. There's the inflationary increases for our mandated programs. And so those often fall in various categories. We need to purchase the right services, we need to purchase the right equipment in our water and wastewater sections. And utility increase, things that around energy, for example, that are dictated by other bodies and other groups. You know, when we look at discretionary, and I put in brackets, there are those traditional services as well. They're based on growth, there's a demand for some of them. Some of it falls under a business need. And, you know, we do our best to determine the projected costs of those. But if I think about snow clearing, council can absolutely set a very different standard for your snow clearing. But we will hear very loud and clear from residents, should we look at decreasing that level of service. There is also the materials required to ensure that we're clearing snow and that we're cutting grass. And so whether that's sand, whether that's salt, yes, we're getting creative. We're looking at different means of applications, beet juice, et cetera, et cetera. But those are important elements and materials that we need. The materials that our fire department needs to fight fires. Those aren't things necessarily that we can not look at and that we have, if we have one year where we have more fires, that we're not replacing the various materials that are required. As I said, of course, council always has the ability to look at service levels. And we do do that at times in terms of options for council. Professional services, as we highlighted earlier, we're in a very complex municipal environment right now. It is different, it's changing than it was five years ago, 10 years ago, 15 years ago. Much more legal advice is being sought. And of course, we have our agencies, boards and commissions. Again, a lot of those are traditional things, BIAs, libraries. People expect those types of services from their communities. And so there's some agreements, there's other costs that are associated with those. So again, just clarifying some budget terminology because I think sometimes we use a lot of this interchangeably. And we are getting to the end of the presentation. Base budget, these are those annualized impacts from previous decisions. The increase due to inflation, contractual obligation and other uncontrollable items. Service level enhancements, fairly self-explanatory in terms of what type and quality of service is required, expected and desired. Zero-based budgeting, so a lot of people reference zero-based budgeting. And when I talk to my colleagues about zero-based budgeting, the budget is rebuilt from scratch annually and does allocate funding based on efficiency and necessity versus just budget history. I think that's an important element to highlight. So it's not just, you know, what we've always done, we're going to continue to do. However, what is not included when you look at zero-based budgeting, and this is the important point, is it excludes those legislated, mandated and negotiated items such as collective agreement. So we can't necessarily say we have zero-based budget in the truest, purest sense. Zero-based budgeting is let's remove the things that legally we have to do and then let's start looking at those more traditional or discretionary items. So it is costly, it's complex, it's time-consuming. I think it's an important exercise, but it's often hard to predict because municipalities do have different levels of service and service provisions. And it does involve, it involves a segment of engagement that I think is important with residents in terms of those desired service levels. So not, by no means am I saying it isn't an important exercise, I think it is. But I did want to highlight the importance of segmenting out the various pieces of zero-based budgeting and where there's the impact they can be had. So we talked to you a little bit about our long-term outlook and considerations, climate change and significant weather events. We seem to have much more frequent one-in-one-year, one-in-100-year storms. They seem to happen a couple of times a year now instead of, as their name dictates. There's the infrastructure gap. And just tax increases over the past 10 years have allowed for sustained services. And I think it's important to look at that, but not enhancements. And I think as we go forward, when we look at just the changing environment that we are in, sometimes looking at enhancing various service levels when we reach that threshold will be important. And so that continued investment is needed. And this council has done that in the past. And I think from a staff perspective, we're grateful that council has recognized the importance of continued investment. And as we head into the 2020 budget, we look forward to council support in terms of what we bring forward. So in terms of next steps, we are going to spend the next little bit working amongst ourselves and collectively in terms of preparing for the budget. We want more dialogue with council as we head into operating. Council priorities will be finalized. And I think our projects need to be aligned and our work and budgets need to be aligned to those. Public engagement, this is a year-round exercise. We do take the data that we get, whether it be from ward meetings, whether it be our strategic and master plan engagements that are either underway, have been underway or will be underway. Things like the mayor's luncheon and politicians' breakfast, other things that we hear from members of council, of course. Stakeholders, in the past, we've reached out somewhat informally. This year, I'd like to do it a little bit more formally in terms of reaching out to key stakeholder groups and stakeholder agencies and asking them where they think budget investment should be. So we see this a lot with chambers and various other organizations. And of course, we will be doing another online survey. And so we kick off things tonight with council. There'll be a lot of work between now and the next time we're in front of you and then working towards the December 16th approval. So both Terry and I can answer any questions that committee may have.
Okay, thank you very much, Mike and Terry, for that presentation. So any questions from council? Okay, I thought we were going to breeze through this. It was like a race to the bottom. Oh, now it lights up like a Christmas tree. Okay, so councillor McPherson, you start us off, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to Terry and Mike for the presentation. Very thorough, very thought-provoking. And I just, really, the only question I have is around council priorities. And when looking at the council priorities, as we've stated them here in the presentation, they're very, very high-level, almost, I would say, to a vision level. And I sometimes look at those and look at, did we not do a whole vision strategy last term? And now we're kind of restating the vision, but anyway. So, you know, when we look back at the future focus, you know, when we put that together, we put together probably closer to actions that were in there as opposed to strategic priorities or even strategic objectives. But I think what we got out of that was we got razor-focused on what it is we wanted to do during that term of council. And, you know, those things were, you know, certainly very, very concrete. They were measurable, you know, we could, you know, when we did them, you know, we checked the box and then, and then we could, we could look at the results coming out of those, those actions. So I guess my question or comment is, for this budget, are we anticipating getting through the rest of our strategy and getting to actions? And those actions will then become the council priorities? As opposed to, you know, a vibrant community, resilient community, those types of things?
Three, Mr. Chair. My simple answer to that is yes, councillor. The process that we're now undergoing is we've got these strategic priorities, the four that have been highlighted and that have been brought together. The process we're working now, based on what we heard from council, whether it be the definitions and so forth, is now highlighting what are those strategic objectives. And then we will be going away, taking all of that information and coming back and presenting to council the strategic actions that will fall under those strategic objectives. So I think the way you've laid it out will be the way we are coming forward, except staff are going to go away now, looking at both the priorities, the objectives council sets. And then we're going to come back to you with those action plans. So in some ways, similar to what you had before, but built slightly differently.
Okay, we'll wait and see for that. One other question, and maybe this is for Terry. Intergenerational stability. Can you give me an example of what we mean by intergenerational stability when we're talking about financial stability?
So through the chair, it's about making sure that over the years and decades, we still have enough money to do the objectives that are wanted later. Like, we won't, we can't see right now what our objectives are going to be later, but we want to make sure that we're setting ourselves up so that we're staying on course with financial stuff.
Three, Mr. Chair, I mean, maybe another way, I think, to describe it is we often look at, you know, could we do more work right now? Could we look, take on more projects? Can we do more projects? Can we enhance and do a new facility and so forth? All, I think, important considerations. There are important discussions and debates and dialogue that we should have. One of the things we need to be cognizant of is simply, if we do incur long-term borrowing, if we incur increased debt, what does that look like? What's our ability to pay? What is our growth projections? And how does that match to where we're spending? So that, you know, the decisions we're making are ones that people, five years, 10 years, 15 years down the road, will look back and say, well, that was the right decision. Lot of growth happening, so a lot of investment in infrastructure. Very little growth happening, probably a more basic level of investment in infrastructure. So what helps us get to some of that intergenerational decision-making is really the financial modeling that will come next as part of our financial sustainability plan. Here's the amount of money coming in. Here's the type of massive or important or critical or large investments we should make now to prepare ourselves for the next 20, 30 years. I always say, any facility we build should be looking at, what does our community look like 20 years from now? Not just five years from now in terms of what's affordable, but what does it look like 20 years from now?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Next, we have Mayor Easton, and welcome back, your worship. You look in fine form.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It's because they switch positions, the screen will be totally different.
I can bow out, I can bow out. No, I can bow out and then I'll queue back in.
Okay, well, thank you, councillor. Okay. Yeah, councillor, you need to...
Mr. Chairman, I could easily have spoken.
Well, this is what happens when we play musical chairs. You're up, councillors, jump back in.
I appreciate the consideration around the chair, the actual seat. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make some comments and then at some point I do have a motion to introduce when it's appropriate. First of all, Mr. Chairman, I would like to note that I believe this is one of the best laid-out reports that we've had at this... best-laid-out reports that we've had at this point to begin to prepare our minds for the tasks ahead. And, and I think that some of it is quite high-level, but it's allowing us to look where we should be looking around some of those models and priorities that, that we are constantly working with. And like councillor McPherson, I also want to make sure that the priorities get confirmed before we do anything else. And I want to make certain that we, we don't need to all agree on what they are, but I just want to make sure that we have that quorum that is moving forward and that there's no question in anybody's mind. So, I thought that was a great question, and the answer was, was pretty clear. So, Mr. Chairman, I guess what I'm working up to is something that we came to realize last year, that as we had these discussions, that we need to make sure that we have motions for every one of these major decisions as we go along, so that we don't find ourselves in December pulling out ideas because we're tilting around at difficult decisions. We need to make sure that we have all the information that's required, and some of that information isn't readily available anymore because of the way the province is doing business. So, it's just, I think, a warning for ourselves. I think that this document allows us to move into very realistic discussions at all key points of service and service delivery. We've been through a very painful period of time where we had to pick up a legacy, where there was a deliberate and slow decline in building condition, in sidewalks, where the best you ever got out of a sidewalk repair was a spray of orange or red paint with absolutely no intentions of doing anything to fix it. And we're moving away from that. I guess people thought things would just go away if you ignored them, but it's cost us dearly to catch up. And we did introduce the infrastructure levy for roads, bridges, and culverts. We certainly shouldn't be tampering with that in any way, shape, or form. If anything, with the condition of our urban roads, we need to be looking at that very realistically. We need to remove the emotion from budgeting and stick to the facts. I think we will be much happier with the outcome if we know that we are working from data all the time and not allowing ourselves to be skating around to satisfy our political agendas. Council's final decisions need to be well-founded, and we need to address the unknown. Already, we know that, you know, West Langton Hospital, there's still, the premier is, you know, he's really, he's confirmed, and he's not budging, that that hospital is going to be built. That means that there needs to be a new levy, because what we have in the bank is not going to come anywhere near doing that work. So, that is, it's not really a full unknown, but if we don't get it into the mix, it certainly will be a big surprise. There's a great deal of pressure to respond, particularly with a quick change-arounds at the provincial level. I think that statistic that shows 1.2 million in 20, whatever it was, 2011, and $350,000 now, if that doesn't tell a tale about a gap in funding, I don't think anything else will, because I can remember the days when we were getting 50 cents on the dollar for roads, and it was no problem at all. So, council has the final decisions, no question about it, and it will be based on our future directions and that work plan, which really was very important in the last term. And staff have the burden of shepherding council through all the policies, the procedures, and the theoretical models that make up strategic budgeting. And I'm going to be looking for all the difference, all the different models that we can realistically apply, because I believe that that's where, where we need to be in terms of making decisions. But I like the report. I think it's given us a great deal to consider, and if we continue to go back to it and use it as our guide along with these additional pieces, it'll, it'll get, be a very, very, it'll be a good budget year for, for the town, definitely. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor Easton. I, councillor McLough.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Mr. Kerkopolis. Yeah, I remember that meeting that we had. It was probably two coffees long. A lot of that is in this report, which I think is fantastic. I really have to say, this report is really good, very informative for those that are, you know, clueless when it comes to budgets and how they work. I particularly liked pages 31 and 32, you know, the explanations of, you know, the residential property taxes and where we stand with regards to it. Question I have is, you know, things that I hear from ratepayers is, with regards to the M-PAC assessments and how they go up, and, you know, there's residents that have been living here for 30, 40, 50 years, and through no fault of their own, their homes go up in value, their incomes remain stagnant, and they're concerned about affordability. Do, do, have we ever looked at possibly, similar to what's happened in other states or provinces or townships, some, like, homestead-type tax relief or some sort of relief for, for people that could be struggling in that, in that instance?
So, I think both Terry and I probably have some comments to make, but I see Terry gesturing to make some comments first, so I'll let her go first.
Through the chair. So, it is the Municipal Property Assessment Corporation that does evaluate the property value, and it's, they, they do have a program that if people are running on hardships for various reasons, they can apply to M-PAC to have those relief programs. But they're more so from that group.
Thank you. And I think that's important for residents to know that they can seek that sort of assistance, because I, I thank the people in this, in the audience, you know, that are here tonight, that, you know, we do care about the town's money and how it's spent. I, I, I'm hearing good things from residents as far as our stances and our programs that we're offering with regards to climate change and our moving forward with addressing it. So, you know, what we're doing money-wise, I think we're spending it wisely. Another concern that I possibly may have is the, with another controllable versus uncontrollable costs. Is there, is, is, is there a possibility, or is there ever a concern where we create higher uncontrolled costs by adding to controlled costs? Like, the uncontrollable costs arise in the future with today's decisions with the controlled costs that we're adding to? But, you know, is there, is there a possibility that we run by doing that?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I think Terry also has some comments, but I think the way I'd answer that, councillor, I think the one area where uncontrollable costs or controllable costs sometimes become uncontrollable is every decision we make from the addition of staffing. So, staffing sometimes becomes one of those uncontrollable costs when we look at the addition of new staff and new programs. But the process that we're undertaking to make sure that these decisions aren't just simply made and not given the level of, I think, analysis or rigor that they deserve is, is making sure that there is a business case, that we are looking at that return-on-investment, because you're right, at times, when we look at adding staff, whether that be frontline staff or senior staff in terms of the provision of new services, they sometimes then find themselves going into that uncontrollable level. But I would, I would, I think, say to council that anytime we're looking at new services and the provision of new services, we're assessing them under the categories of, is this something that now we're going to be told we have to do? So, I think the best one that I look at is the provision of sidewalk clearing. We're going to do an analysis as staff and look at, is outsourcing the better option or potentially looking at adding additional staff? If we add additional staff, that becomes uncontrollable, because they're usually going to be frontline staff that are within our unionized environment, and so then they're subject to a collective agreement. But the impetus to look at that particular issue is one of those mandated or legislated issues. So, none of them are, I think, you know, my, my long-winded answer is probably, we're looking at everything to make sure that we don't fall into that category and that we're giving it the analysis that it requires. But occasionally, yeah, absolutely, there are things that aren't mandated and legislated, that are discretionary, that sometimes fall within that uncontrollable at times. So, I don't know if Terry's got some more to add.
Through the chair, I had two comments. Just for the, your first comment as well, I just wanted to expand that if anybody is having financial difficulties and wants to reach out to the tax clerk here at the town, she is very open to discussing people's hardships, and she knows a lot of the avenues that they can go in order to seek relief, even if it's setting up a payment plan with the town. And that's at taxclerk@lincoln.ca, and you can email them, her directly. So, that's with the first one. And for the uncontrollable versus the discretionary, the discretionary side is more so the actual service levels and what we're going to be providing to the citizens, which is based on our decisions today. So, if we've promised residents that we're going to perform certain services for them, and the cost for that service rises, it, it starts to become more of an uncontrollable cost to do that, especially if we've passed a bylaw that will perform this service and then the costs go up. So, it does impact.
If I may, one more, one more, I know there's other councillors in queue. I just, I just, I just want, I'm just really hoping for, moving forward, like, a balance between existing residents, you know, their, their comfort with paying their taxes, along with, you know, new residents relocating to Lincoln, and, you know, the existing residents may not necessarily demand or expect the certain services that we're coming up with or providing, and just try to come up with a balance between what new residents or what migrating residents are expecting or hoping for, if we can, you know, try to ensure balance. And I trust that staff is doing that already, you know, but I just want to reiterate that, that try not to, you know, become something more than, you know, what we're capable of being. That's basically my point.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I think just to that point, councillor, I appreciate the comment, and I think, you know, when we look at our engagement and engaging in the various ways we do, whether it, again, it be through ward meetings that, that you have or any other councillor has, I think we are trying to take the temperature, we are trying to listen to what residents say, those that engage with us, and oftentimes, while we ask for those particular criteria so that we can determine, have you been here longer than 10 years? Have you been here, you know, zero to five years, et cetera? We do our best to ensure that it is a very balanced engagement with residents and that we're hearing from all, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Councillor Brene.
Thank you, Chair Patsiriba. Through you, just really a few comments. I, I like where we're starting off on this 2020 budget in the 101 introduction. I, I really think it's important that we're looking at this through a, a community growth lens, because already, you know, we're, we're starting to hear, you know, from the residents that are moving into the new Cachee area and that are moving up into, you know, the LaSagne development concerns about, about traffic and, and safety and all that stuff. So, I really think it's important that we look at, you know, as we go into budget, that we look at this through a community growth lens in terms of, you know, what we're going to be doing moving forward with transit, whether that's the continuation of U-Link or, you know, a, a spend in intermunicipal transit as we move forward. So, I'm really glad to see that we're looking at that through a community growth lens, because as councillor McLough just, just alluded to, you know, we all hear at the door during, during the, during the election about people that have moved here, and, you know, maybe, maybe some of those people that are moving here have different expectations of what service levels will be from someone that's lived here for five decades. So, I think the community growth lens is, is very, very important, and I'm glad to see it's going to be included here. And then, of course, the affordability. We all heard at the door that people that have moved here from Oakville and Mississauga and Burlington, you know, are loving the area, but they can't believe their taxes are so high. Why am I paying more, more for taxes than Lincoln than I did in Burlington or Mississauga? So, I think, you know, what you've shown there in your presentation really, really demonstrates, you know, some of the reasons, and I just wish that we could, you know, we could get that message out to the residents so that they could really understand it, because that is the frustrating thing as a, as a councillor. Through you, Mr. Chair, you know, I, I think it's very important, as the mayor, you know, reiterated there, that as we move forward, the, the infrastructure levy is so important. You know, when, when you look at the pie chart there, and where our dollar is going, you know, 54 cents, 28 cents to public infrastructure, public works, roads, bridges and culverts, and then 26 cents to parks, recreation, and culture. So, 54 cents of every dollar is going to those two areas. So, you know, through you, Mr. Chair, I just hope, Mr. CAO, that we, you know, we really take a, a really hard look at, at the commitment that we're going to continue to make as this council, as we move forward in terms of infrastructure. And, you know, we look at, you know, what we're currently doing in terms of one large road rehabilitation project. You know, last year, it was the Drake survey. This year, it's Elizabeth Street. Next year, we're looking at Rittenhouse Road and Vineland. I really think it's important, as a council, we continue to look at these budget processes as holistically as the town of Lincoln. You know, you know, we've just all sat down in, in our ward meetings, you know, meeting with, with Financen, with, with you, Mr. CAO, you know, and one of the frustrating things is when you, when you're hearing from residents that in 2019, they're asking questions, you know, when is my street or when is my road going to be redone? And you're telling them it's 2027, and they're saying, you know, it's eight years out. And, I mean, that's just the reality. We have to, we have to continue to, to look at these, and I hope, as we move forward with this budget and future budgets, we have good communication between council and SMT, so we have those discussions about the 10-year plan, because it's important to move those around. I think we demonstrated that with Rittenhouse and moving it up, and I think that's important. You know, I also want to, you know, want to, want to say that, you know, as we move forward in this budget, it is important to, to look at, you know, the big things. But I think if we look back over the last year and where we've heard some of the highest accolades, it's in what we've done with the BAA and the Barrels and Blooms and the Christmas lights and, you know, the chalkboard and stuff like that. And a lot of that stuff doesn't cost big money, but it's what people are actually, are actually looking at as what's, what's important to them. So, I think we need, we need to look at, we need, we need to look at everything from top to bottom, and I, I think this is a very good start. I'm really hoping, Mr. CAO, that we continue to look at, you know, just because we've done the road rehabilitation program or that one big capital project in the past, that it's not always the lens we look at, that what we're doing in 2018 and 2019 doesn't have to be what we do in 2024 and 25. So, I, I just hope that we continue to look at that. I guess my other, my other question, you know, as we've just done some business walk initiatives, you know, one of the, one of the big things that we heard continued to be about parking issues in the downtown from all those businesses. So, I mean, I know we've got the BDSS site, you know, looking down the road. I, I know at one point, we talked about some expropriation for parking, so I don't know if that should be part of the lens we look at through this, through this budget in terms of, you know, moving up those concerns that we're having from the businesses about parking issue. Obviously, BDSS would, would be a long-term solution, but, you know, do we need to, do we need to move up some short-term solutions, you know, in, in what's our, what's our priority?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Maybe I'll start with the last comment there and, and suggest that that'll be something that we'll definitely take back as senior staff, as SMT, in terms of some of the work we do, so that we're prepared with a potential recommendation to look at, what is the appropriate year? Is it this year? Is it next year? Looking at parking and looking at what we can and can't do. I know there are some initiatives underway with the BAA to look at the properties on the north side of King Street and some realignment of the parking out back, and we are... And we are, uh, in discussions with, with Ms. Hicks, uh, to engage those particular businesses, uh, to have that type of conversation, to look at what that looks like and I think finally get that particular piece addressed. But definitely something we can, we can take back, Counselor. Uh, in terms of your other, uh, your other comments, uh, maybe I'll just provide a few, uh, a few comments to those. Uh, definitely the infrastructure levy is something that I don't see us not continuing to support and recommend to council, definitely in the, uh, short-term future. Uh, as I said, sometimes hard or, or easy, depending on how you look at it, to suggest if we want to get a budget down by a percent or a percent and a half, let's cut that. Um, it's sometimes also hard to tell residents we want to put money in the bank, uh, and we want to levy you for it, uh, so that we can have money for the future. But I think then we can't be talking out of both sides of our mouth and talk about financial sustainability and intergenerational decisions and, uh, using those lenses and at the same time not put the appropriate monies in the bank to prepare for those. So definitely something that I think you'll see us continue, uh, to support and continue to recommend for council consideration. Uh, and your, uh, your comment around how we've done things in the past and will that be how we do them in the future? Absolutely not. Um, I, I'm always a proponent of looking at things differently and encouraging, uh, all of our staff, they do that already, but I think, uh, we will definitely look at, you know, could we do more than one roads project and what does that look like from a scenario perspective, both on the staffing side as well as, uh, on funding? Uh, and where would we look at that funding? Uh, what programs are out there to get that funding? Do we look at, again, growth projections, uh, and long-term borrowing as a way to do that as well? So definitely things that, uh, as we look at recommendations for the budget, uh, we will analyze and bring back to council.
Uh, thank you, Mr. C.A.O. Mr. Through you, Mr. Chair. I just went, had one more comment. Um, so, Mr. C.A.O., thank you for that response. Appreciate that. Um, you know, early this afternoon, we had an opportunity to sit down and talk about a few things and I mentioned to you that, uh, as Chair of Infrastructure, I've been invited to a meeting with, um, Director Graham, who's not here tonight because he's on vacation, as well as Mr. Tasker, Ian Tasker, to speak about, as you already mentioned, the legislated, um, sidewalks and how we're going to approach that. So I'm really glad to see that you're telling all of council that, uh, we need to look at this and really make a cost comparison because, um, I, I just hope we, uh, we don't go down a road where we just put these out for tender and walk away from the sidewalks and then we are dealing with the wrath of citizens because our expected, uh, expectations and service levels drops off because it's not in our control. And I'm not saying we should keep it in-house, I'm just saying, I'm really glad to see that you're telling all of council, we'll look at this through a, a lens of cost comparison and to make an informed decision. Thank you very much.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Just on that last point, I, I think, you know, one of the things that we've seen when we look at our current grass-cutting contract, we have a hybrid model. Uh, and I'm not suggesting by any means, uh, trying to predispose where we go on, um, sorry, presuppose where we go, uh, as it relates to sidewalk clearing, but I think sometimes when you have models, uh, where, uh, you have something that is a hybrid, it often keeps both sides, um, willing to compete and, and work that extra bit harder. Uh, definitely when you look at the private sector and the private sector providing that service. So we experience that currently with grass-cutting. A number of municipalities, um, outside of Niagara do that as it relates to garbage collection, uh, or their sanitary works and, and recycling collection. And so I think there's definitely ways to do it, but, uh, again, we spoke a lot about informed decision-making and data. Uh, we need to do that analysis on both sides, uh, and demonstrate to council, uh, at the end of the day, which one is, uh, the most cost-effective and if that is to maintain that service in-house, then we do it that way. And if it's to, uh, externally outsource that, uh, then we'll do it that way as well.
Okay. So I think Terry.
I just, uh, through the chair, I wanted to provide a little bit of context for the value for tax dollar. Um, as you were speaking about, um, investing more in roads, this one is, uh, specifically what the tax dollar goes towards. It, it doesn't represent our actual expenditures. The majority of our roads, large roads programs are funded through other things, development charges, debt, that kind of thing. So even though this chart makes it look like it's pretty even between public works and parks, we actually, we do spend quite a bit on, and we'll see it more when we do our capital budget.
Thank you. Yeah. Through you, Mr. Chair. Just the last thing, I, I see the, uh, the mayor's going to bring a motion and I'm, I'm really glad to see that in that motion, um, there's something that's referring to long-term borrowing and debt. I think, I think, um, you know, we've always been fairly conservative in my estimation and I'm glad to see that we're going to, we're going to look at all those opportunities so that it's not just reserves and, and, and everything we're looking at. So, uh, I think we're, uh, we're in a good, a good spot. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you very much, um, counselors, for some very, very salient points based on tonight's discussion. I've got a bunch of, of just notes jotted down and, and so it's my, my opportunity to ask questions, but I think what I'm going to try to frame tonight's discussion around and with the mayor's motion coming, I've got transformational budget opportunity. So, how I think we're looking at that is, is, um, and we go to, to page thirty-seven, data decision, um, data-driven decision-making and the cost of not, uh, cost of not investing. So we've got our infrastructure levy. We looked at that at our first term of council. Some of us got gun-shy and bailed on the idea, was that the right thing to do? In retrospect, no. We know that there's a gap, so by not continuing, continuing to increase that, you're not being transformational. You're never going to get ahead of the curve. And, and I look for things like that this year. I look for stronger business cases for capital projects, including risk assessment and the value for climatic change. Can't continue to keep doing the same things and expecting the results to be different. There was an excellent, and I meant to circulate it to everyone and, and, and there was a, um, excellent program on Sixty Minutes, two weeks ago. And I don't know whether you worship you, you guys experienced this on your trip to Holland, but it was about Holland and that there was a flood in Holland in the fifties. There hasn't been a loss of life since nineteen fifty because they made change. They made difficult change. If you look at the amount, our, our system is based on insurance payouts and what do we do after the fact? It's about transformational. It's about going to these things and, and they had a little, little section on there about a little town in New Jersey got decimated by the hurricane. Do, do you go to the insurance companies and rebuild on the same site knowing that this is going to happen? That these hundred-year storms happen more frequently? We should look, be looking at thousand-year storm? And what's the relief? And going to some of these insurance companies and provincial governments that dole out money for these effects and saying, okay, let's stop looking at this on, let's start, let's start looking at how do we solve the problem? How do we move those people back? How do we move the road? Because throwing a million dollars each year at, at shoreline, um, degradation isn't solving the problem. Chasing your tail. So that's what I'm looking for this time. Policy to increase user fees to match the economic context we adopt. If it's a five percent increase that we're looking at, let's look at our user fees to match that. Ten-year capital plan. Um, hopefully, you know, we used it more as a, as a, as a placeholder, um, that our estimates are more current. So when we, when we go out to tender, that, that we're pretty much bang on, on those. Um, and I, and I love that the priorities are going to be confirmed before anything else is done. I'm looking for pilot projects this year. Pilot projects to attack climatic change. Right? We've done the traffic monitoring for three years. We heard this at the door, speed reduction. The status quo of, of installing speed bumps at three-way stops is no longer acceptable. Um, you know, it's going to be the town of Lincoln's fiftieth anniversary in two thousand and twenty. Uh, you know, we should look at, um, time for the, I've got time for a town of Lincoln budget, not ward-based. Let's, let's, let's look at not duplicating services, not mirroring, we've got our, we've got our trans, we've got our transportation master plan coming, we've got our parks master plan here. Let's start putting our money where our mouth is and building these transformational pieces. If it says we don't need, we don't need a skate park in East End, we don't need a skate park in the West End. We need one skate park and we're going to travel to it. And then, you know, we have a museum that we're going to travel to and, and, and things like that. So that's the kind of things that I'm looking for. I've got time for action budget. So those things that we keep talking about, I'd like to see them.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I mean, there, there's a lot that you said there, I know. Uh, I'm making mental notes and I, I assume senior staff are also making their notes, so, uh, all important, uh, topics and, and highlights that, uh, we will definitely, uh, look to incorporate and, uh, and take seriously.
Excellent, Chief. I, I don't want to see those, um, you know, the, um, the bar graph of, of diminishing return with, um, increasing, um, uh, cost. I want to see real. So, Your Worship, you've got, this is, this is a, a good lead into, into your motion. If you may. Yes, you are. So I'm going to turn you on.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I really appreciate your comments. I think that you provided some dimensions there that we hadn't talked about earlier, that hadn't come up earlier this evening and so, uh, I do hope that somebody was taking notes. I was. Um, I'd like to move this motion, Mr. Chairman, um, as I pointed out before, because I think that at the end of each of these meetings and possibly throughout the meetings, if it's necessary for us to, uh, be making decisions, that we do it by motion. So I didn't want this evening to end without some direction to staff and, uh, there is one piece in here that, uh, we haven't talked about. Uh, there is, um, a comma that needs to be removed from the last paragraph after the word implementing. If you would just take that out. I guess my finger got a little bit ahead of me. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll let you read the motion, but I would like, uh, I would like to move it and, um, certainly look forward to, um, uh, the discussion with the C.A.O., um, on the, um, on the workload and, uh, staffing needs, uh, at, uh, the appropriate time, but definitely be for October the twenty-third because I'm sure we'll start, uh, to look at, um, more concrete decisions at that time. We all need that information. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion to receive and file the presentation, two thousand and twenty budget one-on-one introduction is information. Council directs staff to continue with all steps to finalize council priorities, including projects that will impact budget planning with final approval of council priorities before committee of the whole budget meeting on October twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen. Council directs staff to continue to expand with council on theoretical models and the most realistic data available on impacts of community growth, revenue, affordability, long-term borrowing, debt and service levels prior to any determination of budget ranges. And as part of the operating budget, the C.A.O. will present in camera to council a comprehensive assessment of workload with particular attention to the gap of preparing for growth and implementing the work plan for the day-to-day operations, project development and implementation before committee of the whole budget meeting on October twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen. And that is moved by Mayor Easton. All in favor? Any opposed? And that is unanimous. Thank you, Your Worship. Confidential items? We have none. Staff remarks? Anyone? Anyone? Okay. Committee remarks? Everyone's had their opportunity. Being no further business, I call this meeting adjourned.